Unless you really mean it.
No.
Terry, why'd you let him talk to me like that? Oh, we're friends.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Councilman, could you please stand Councilman Smith and do the pledge for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Casabon, prayer, please.
Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight.
Help us, Lord, to make the right decisions on these cases and continue to do the work for the parish, for the best interest of the people that live here, and all of us. Be with us as we travel home, in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen.
You've got to roll your prayer, man.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dean.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Ms. Casabon.
Here.
Mr. Loreno.
Yeah.
Mr. Tolladano.
Present.
Ms. Tanner.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Canulett.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Loughlin.
Here.
Mr. Bender.
Here.
Mr. Ari.
Here.
And Mr. Randolph. We have a quorum.
All right. Public comment, a three-minute timeline is established for each member of the public wishing to speak for or against on any items on the agenda accepts appeals. We don't have any appeals. To ensure that all speakers are heard, please hold cheers and applause. Anyone who wishes to place a comment in the record but does not wish to speak at the podium may fill out a speaker card and check the box indicating they do not wish to speak. And if you do wish to speak, please fill out the card and indicate. So this is a special meeting. We're calling it primarily because we had an economic opportunity to benefit the health and welfare of the parish, and they needed some help with us in getting that done on an expedited basis. So that was the principal reason, excuse me, why we called this. But as mission creep tends to come into some of these meetings, we had some other urgent things that came up, including our municipal audit prevention reports that we needed to get in, as well as a few moratorium ordinances, which by definition are also urgent for the health and welfare of the citizens. And we also have a resolution to join in the FEMA lawsuit, which is time-sensitive. So with that being said, we'll go to number one, development ordinance, calendar number 7270, ordinance amending the official zoning map to reclassify 5.61 acres of land from its present HC3 Highway Commercial District to an I-2 Industrial District, Ward 9, District 14. Mr. Massengill is here to discuss this.
Good evening, councilmen, and chairman. I will be judicious with your time. We really appreciate the opportunity to come before you. These are the exciting opportunities when we get to highlight a local company reinvesting into their operations and creating new economic development opportunities. I will just point out a couple of things. I have provided a project memorandum for you all for all the other particular details, but let me just highlight a couple of aspects. First and foremost, let me thank Ross Liner and the administration for their support and alignment with this. Ross and the Planning and Development working alongside us to put this company in the position to get in front of you all tonight. This is a company that has a standing history in the parish. They've got about 65 employees now. With this expansion in the course of the next couple of years, with the addition of potential five new lines, we'll have 150 new employees. This is an expansion of $2.5 million of a company that's already based here that sees the opportunity to be in a growth mode. They have targeted a building that's been out of commerce for over 15 years, adding to their capacity, and they'll have well over about 110,000 square feet under operation once this project is fully operational. I have Mike Boudreau, the President and CEO of BEC Co-Packing. This is a food manufacturing company, and luckily, we've had the opportunity to do some site visits with some of your colleagues. I want to say thank you, obviously, with the councilman in this district, Councilman Randolph, thank you very much, and Councilman Loughlin and Canulett for being such champions of this project, working with economic development. And chairman, we would not be here without your personal engagement. The ability to bring this project to you for this rezoning application has been pretty significant. One, this is an opportunity to take a piece of property that's been out of commerce for over 15 years and now create new net jobs with a company that has a standing history, that is highly reputable and credentialed in this space, and one that we have taken the time to do some significant due diligence. This is a good company that wants to continue to grow, and they're in a significant growth mode. This is an opportunity to take these two new lines and take it to five lines. Mike can share with you some of those unique pieces. We've provided some additional company information, and the request before you tonight is to approve the rezoning application that was voted unanimously at the planning and zoning meeting with no opposition to this particular request, and now it is before you tonight. If we can continue to prop this company up for success, we see additional growth potential. And we want to point out that being able to operate in this accelerated timeframe has really demonstrated two very key critical points for economic development. One, we can make government work for business and industry. We can communicate to business and industry in this parish and outside of this parish that we can do business. We can create a situation where government is working alongside you to position you for success, so we can continue to see that investment into our people. The second component is that it puts this company in a place to meet very important benchmarks with new contracts that are in line. They're able to bring this machinery online in an expedited fashion, and they can begin the renovation process and work with the parish, the planning and zoning, to make sure that we're put into the right position. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say thank you and ask for your approval of this, and we can certainly ask Mr. Boudreau to come up and address the council.
If he'd like to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Boudreau. I am President and CEO of BEC Co-Packers. It is a pleasure to be before you and this council. I can reiterate again to what Mr. Massengill was saying, that our growth opportunity and the expedition that you are providing for us is greatly appreciated. The notion of where we started with this company, very small back in 2017 to 2019, when we moved it into an existing facility at the J.F. Smith Park Facility, and grew rapidly there. In fact, we've outgrown it to the point where we are right now. And knowing that we wanted to expand, we had a choice of going backwards with some construction there, and the cost of construction was very high. We looked at an opportunity in New Orleans, and driving back and forth every day from our facility to this property at Highway 11, we questioned the opportunity, and although it is what we deem to be a blighted property, it's a strong facility that with your help and Mr. Massengill's help in looking at this and the opportunity of rezoning, that rezoning is going to allow us to expedite and move very quickly into this facility and begin the construction and operation very quickly. What it really means is when we started a new line in BEC that opened up a new product of sports drinks and tees and waters, that line caught on so rapidly across the nation that we literally had companies from California to New York calling us. And the reason they were calling is because, thinking back just a few years, with shipping and the cost of such COVID-related, the idea of bringing something to central United States and south where they can manufacture and ship and distribute from our location was paramount. The notion of where we located at the interchange of 59, 12, and 10 is ideal. St. Tammany has presented itself well to what we can do in manufacturing there and spreading across. So with that in mind, the opportunity of what you're presenting and allowing us to do there is going to be able to make us be able to grow rapidly with the equipment that we put in and the employees that we'll bring in locally. With that being said, I'm sure you've had it before. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Do I have any questions at this point?
I have just a comment. So, sir, first.
Hold on.
My whole thing's off.
Yeah. It's on now.
It is. Okay, thank you. Sir, first of all, thank you for bringing your company to St. Tammany Parish, the greatest Slidell area. I happen to be another Slidell councilman, but for all of us here on the council, we know that jobs will come for people who live in Lacon, in Slidell, in Madisonville, in Mandeville. We want those people to just come from all parts of St. Tammany. So appreciate what y'all are doing. I think the good news, and usually people will send to all council members emails, which covers all of us, whether support or against. I have not received one email, okay, saying, "What's going on? Why are you doing this? Why are you going to industrial whatever?" That's encouraging. So thank y'all again.
Thank you, sir.
And my colleagues that are involved in this districts, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, sir. Thank you. So you're expanding the actual building, or you're building a new building directly behind it?
The existing facility we are in right now was originated for a product you probably well know, Sal and Judy's.
Yeah.
It was a total of about 14,000 square, actually around 14,000 to 17,000 square feet, of which 7,000 of that was warehouse and internally was the administration and the production. We built behind that 20,000 square feet already.
Yeah.
And we've outgrown it in less than a year. And the idea was that we have another lot behind it we could expand. Unfortunately, it wasn't really large enough for what we wanted to do in the expansion, and the cost was astronomical. The alternative was to move to another opportunity in New Orleans or somewhere else. But as I said, in writing back and forth past this vacated property, we saw an opportunity. And in talking to St. Tammany Corporation, Mr. Massengill, and the owner of that property, we quickly realized that our dreams could come true just a quarter of a mile from where we are now on that property itself. We've currently entered into a lease purchase agreement. We're ready to purchase immediately upon the approval of this council, but the lease allowed us to move quickly into it and solidify. So that property is approximately 60,000 square feet internally, of which we'll use about 45 for warehousing and the other for the first phase of manufacturing. From there, we have the ability to move inside immediately one line. We've already ordered the second line, and we can go from there to three or four more lines as the growth continues for us, and success happens to be there. Obviously, we won't bring those on until we solidify the clients that are there, but right now, our phone is ringing with potential clients, so we feel very strongly what we can do. In addition, right in front of this property is approximately three plus or minus acres that we're going to secure as well. And we feel that if the need be, we could go out in front and build additionally, less than accept what we need for parking. So a great opportunity to expand in that other location.
Okay, so you're talking about the Speedway, Nexus Speedway slot car racing? Is that three acres?
It's all laying right in front of it.
Okay. I'm just trying to look, I'm just looking up on the, and I'm looking at this, and I see the property by, you're next to Cora View?
I'm sorry?
Cora View? Is that where your location is?
The existing we have now?
Yes.
It is in the J.F. Smith Industrial Park, which is about a quarter mile away. Come out of the parking, back down Highway 11, south towards 12. The vacated property there is at Brown Village, Village Road and Highway 11.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was thinking of. Okay, that's what it looks like. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir, and thank you again.
Ms. Smith?
I'm up at Slidell. East side, but it's going to benefit all of Slidell. I mean, these are good jobs. They pay, they got benefits. This is a win-win. I mean, we need, we cannot be, continue to be a bedroom community. We have to provide jobs, and we have to provide jobs at all levels for the workforce, and this is a good one. That area's been out of commerce for a long time. It's ideally suited for commerce. It's right on the interstate, and it's right on the railroad line. So, and it's right by the industrial park. This had to be done very, very quickly because there was a time constraint. And so we do get a lot of grief sometimes for being slow or not pulling all in the same direction between the council or the council administration. But everyone in this case was in a hurry, and everybody agreed, and it shows that government can work, not always as fast as we'd like, but in this case, we got the job done.
Does anybody have any other questions? I think we have one comment card from Ms. Stevens.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate you.
But you didn't tell them what I wrote. I'm for this project. I think adaptive reuse is a wonderful change for St. Tammany Parish. It's a wonderful thing to do, bringing something back online after 15 years. I hope, all I can say is I hope. The reason why you didn't get any letters is because people were not adequately notified who are nearby. But I'm hoping that everybody who should have known knows about it because it really is a positive for the area, and I'm glad to see it. There's no more environmental impact than has already been done long ago, and to bring this back into commerce is a really good thing. Thanks.
Margie Vicner Prey in Lacon. And I just want to say, I'm with the Sierra Club. I represent the Sierra Club at a lot of meetings. And usually, if it's building warehouses and stuff, I'm not always in favor, to put it mildly. But I love this project. This is what we should be aiming for. There is so much abandoned property and already destroyed environmentally, and why not take advantage of those properties? It's cheaper than going in and having to start from scratch, and it saves our precious environment that St. Tammany is known for, the beauty here. So I am totally in favor of this, and I think I put it on my Facebook page, and I said, "Look at this. St. Tammany's doing something right." So thank y'all for moving this along, and thank y'all, thank y'all for bringing this here. Thank you.
I may not survive this meeting with the heart attack from shock that I'm in.
Yeah, I don't know where we are.
But Mr. Massengill, if you could come up real quick.
We're not in the right place.
And I apologize. I know I originally told you you'd get 10-minute presentation, but that didn't make it on it, so I knew you had to abbreviate. I just want, I know that there's been a press release that this was in the paper, as well as, I think, even on TV. But can you just briefly talk about the joining properties have been notified? And I think even one of the joining properties is the one we're selling it at this point, too. But just briefly, just talk about the neighbors.
Yes, sir. And that area is, if you've noticed on some of the maps we've provided earlier, it is already zoned industrial. And so that particular position actually fits well with the existing zoning that is there. And so we take that into consideration. In fact, I think, Mr. Boudreau, you've actually taken some calls about how excited they were to see this project come back online. So yes, we've tried to do the due diligence there and provide plenty of opportunities for people to engage with this. And we've also had an opportunity to do site visits. Councilman Randolph and Loughlin and Canulett have led on that effort and been very clear with me to make sure that this project was up to snuff, and we believe it is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no further comment, Mr. Randolph, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion, sir.
Second.
Mr. Loughlin, would you like the second, since it's next to yours? All right. A motion to second. Please vote.
The motion is unanimous with no one absent.
Keep your word! I'm just going to go right into the show.
Thank you. All right. Second, we have ordinance calendar number 7251AA, ordinance to impose for six months a moratorium and receipt of submissions by the parish planning and zoning commissions for the resubdivision or rezoning of property and or issuance of certain permits by the parish department of planning and development, permits for the construction or placement of certain building structures on property in the area bounded to the north by Interstate 12, to the west by Old Todd Road and Transmitter Road, and bounded to the east by North Shore Boulevard and Highway 433 south of I-12, to Bayou Liberty, Jefferson Avenue, Napoleon Avenue, Florin Road, Laurent Road, and to Lake Ponchatrain, being a portion of Parish Council District Number 11. Ward 7 to 9, District 11. Mr. Loughlin?
Do we have any cards?
We do have two cards. Yeah, why don't you go make a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Give me a second, Mr. Canulett. Okay, Ms. McDonald?
I think this is an amazing opportunity for this parish to start to get it right on development in highly sensitive areas. And I encourage other councilpeople who have districts along the lake to consider a similar moratorium. And I was at the levy board meeting last night, and they made a statement that they want to be more, have more knowledge about what's going on in development of sensitive areas. And I suggested that they get with you all about this because this is a great thing.
Thank you. Mr. Domain, Dr. Domain?
Good evening, Lead Domain. I represent the Bayou Liberty Association. I reside at 34057 Bayou Liberty Road. And we are staunch advocates, if not proponents as well, of this moratorium for a variety of reasons. Certainly, it's nice to have some respite from the onslaught of dense development in very sensitive areas. We appreciate Councilman Loughlin's moratorium proposal for that reason. We also look to this as a possible bridge to something larger and perhaps more permanent. And I say that only because, in general, moratoriums do have a sunset provision. They supposedly end at some point in time. And I point that out because Councilman Loreno's moratorium seems to go on forever. But that's good. And in any case, we look to change, perhaps, the provisions in the UDC, which are being rewritten as we speak, and to add certain provisions that make this moratorium permanent. And we do that because we're concerned about the loss of wetlands. We'd like to have something written in the UDC which provides for, but yet assures, that wetlands will no longer be destroyed, particularly in sensitive areas. We also want some assurance that future structures in sensitive areas will certainly be raised. They'll be on piers, if not pilings. Whatever's required to maintain the natural land's capacity to absorb, to filter water, and to return it to the aquifers. More importantly, to diminish the use of impervious surfaces that tend to cause havoc for those of us living in the perimeter of these large developments and/or downstream, because all that serves to do is to create drainage issues, water runoff onto our properties and into our homes, and all that causes difficulties for you, our elected officials, because you hear our complaints. We are once again asking you to vote in favor of this moratorium. Thank you for hearing our concerns. More importantly, emphatically, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards? Do we have any comments, anyone in the line? Or we had a motion to second? Please vote.
Mr. Fitzgerald, what was your vote? The motion is unanimous with no one absent.
Number three, ordinance calendar number 7254, ordinance to impose a six-month moratorium on receipt of subdivisions by the parish zoning commission for the rezoning of multifamily property and or the issuance of certain permits by the parish department of planning and development, permits for the construction placement of new multifamily building structures on property zoned A6, A7, or A8 in Wards 1, 2, and 3, Districts 1 and 2. Mr. Dean?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This about probably, I guess, 45 days, 50 days ago or so, I met with our attorneys and kind of started looking at doing a moratorium on apartments when I, because I kind of got worried that there were being more planned in my area. I called Mr. Fitzgerald and said if he wanted to join with me. So it's just, that's kind of how all of this started. It was probably about, you know, over. Actually, it laid over for 30 days on the webpage, on the parish webpage. And so that added, what, another 10 or 15 days, I guess? So that's how long it's been going. So in addition, then, Mr. Fitzgerald is going to discuss this amendment that we'd like to put on.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I worked with Marty on this, unaware of any particular apartment complex that would be coming to my district. But I know, generally speaking, the trend has been to try to put the brakes on a little bit and wait until we get the infrastructure suitable for any multifamily dwelling. This is, addresses what I see as we looked at this, as we had A6, A5, A6, A7, A8 residential incorporated. But it came to our attention that there was also the possibility that we would have apartments built in commercial zoning areas as well. So the intent of the amendment is to close that with the overall intent of the moratorium to wait until the infrastructure is ready before any apartment complexes, residential apartment complexes, go in regardless of the zoning. So with that, I move we amend the moratorium. In the phraseology, I think we all have a copy of the moratorium, to include highway commercial zoning classifications with lodging, including apartments, hotels, motels, in Wards 1, 2, 3, Districts 1 and 2 in the preface. And then further into the moratorium, again, in highway commercial zoning classifications with lodging, including apartments, hotels, motels. Or highway commercial zoning classifications with lodging, including apartments, hotels, and motels, a little further down in the paragraph. This is for Districts 1 and 2, in Wards 1, 2, and 3. So I, so move we amend the moratorium and reintroduce it.
Can I get a second on that? All right. Have a motion in second. That's all we need on it. Oh, we need to vote amendment? All right. Or do we, I guess? Oh, sorry. We'll need to vote on the amendment, but I see we may have a card. Mr. Shane?
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Jeff Shane of the Jones Fissell Law Firm, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. We, I have a client that is very interested in this amendment. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with Councilman Fitzgerald and other members of your council leadership team this afternoon. At this point, we've just been provided a copy of the amendment, which I want to review, obviously. And we look forward to having further dialogue with Councilman Dean, Councilman Fitzgerald, and probably all of you at the right time as it relates to what this amendment says, does, and how it might impact, not just my client's project, but how it might impact all of St. Tammany Parish. So I wanted the record to reflect that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So we need to vote on the amendment. We had a motion in second on that, so please vote.
The motion is unanimous with no one absent.
And then we need a motion and a second. Mr. Fitzgerald, you want to, or Mr. Dean, you want a motion and Mr. Fitzgerald, second? All right. So to introduce, thank you. All right. Resolutions. Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Responses. Some of you that may have been here earlier know we just had a committee meeting on this that was chaired by Councilman Smith, and Director Tissue was here. So Councilman Smith, if you want to give a brief sort of recap of the meeting for everybody.
The operation of sewage systems and in each area that Tammany Utilities has a plant. Okay, so we have had the meeting at the Utilities Committee. Everyone who had questions was able to question Chris Tissue on it. Chris Tissue is very knowledgeable. He made himself available. We had a very good discussion back and forth. Everyone seemed to be satisfied. Public had a chance for input. See no reason we shouldn't go ahead and adopt the resolutions as they stand.
Thank you. Do we have any individual councilmembers or any comments on these? Seeing none, and no one in the queue, and no cards on this, we have to do each one of these individually. So Resolution CS number C6749, Resolution to Acknowledge the Receipt and Review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Westwood Sewage Treatment Facility, Ward 4, District 5. Councilman McDonald, moved by Councilman Tolladano, second by Mr. O'Brien. Please vote. Right. Resolution CS number, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Number two, CS number C6750. Resolution to acknowledge receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the West St. Tammany Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 1, District 3. Ms. Kazabon, second by Mr. Loreno, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Number three, resolution CS number C6751. Resolution to acknowledge the receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Timber Branch 2 Regional Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 1, District 1. Mr. Fitzgerald, would you like to move for Mr. Dean? Second by Ms. Kazabon, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Resolution CS number C6752. Resolution to acknowledge receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Tallo Creek Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 1, District 3. Ms. Kazabon, second by Mr. Loreno, please vote.
Mr. Tolladano? The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Resolution CS number C6753. Resolution to acknowledge the review and receipt of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Preferred Equity Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 5, District 5. Mr. Tolladano, second by Mr. Davis, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Resolution CS number C6754. Resolution to acknowledge the receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the North Lake Behavioral Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 7, or Ward 4, District 7. Mr. Davis?
So move, second.
Second by Mr. Tolladano, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Number seven, resolution C6755. Resolution to acknowledge receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Highway 22 Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 4, District 4. Mr. Loreno, moved by Ms. Loreno, second by Mr. Davis, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Resolution CS number C6756. Resolution to acknowledge receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Goodby Regional Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 1, District 3. Ms. Kazabon, moved by Ms. Kazabon, second by Ms. Loreno, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Resolution CS number C6757. Resolution to acknowledge the receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Crossgate Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 8, District 9. Smith, second by Mr. Canulette, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Resolution CS number C6758. Resolution to acknowledge receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Prevention Environmental Audit Report for the Castine Regional Sewer Treatment Facility, Ward 4, District 7. Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Loreno, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
Resolution CS number C6759. Resolution to acknowledge receipt and review of the 2022 Municipal Water Pollution Environmental Audit Report for the Autumn Wind MWPP, Ward 4, District 7. Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Tanner, please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
All right. Resolution CS number C6774. Resolution directed to the parish president on behalf of St. Tammany Parish Government to join the FEMA lawsuit challenging risk rating 2.0 to be filed by the Attorney General. Does anybody have any questions about it? Mr. Sp, you want to move? No questions?
No.
No.
Mr. Bender, you have a question? Oh, okay.
So, just for information for all of my colleagues, okay? About four weeks ago, I contacted Congressman Scalise's DC office. Their chief of staff has been helpful to us after Hurricane Ida. They have tremendous resources up there. They have a FEMA specialist that deals with FEMA out of their DC office. Scheduled to call with that person. And I'm just going to make everyone aware of the basics of what I said, not only in my district, but all of St. Tammany Parish, wherever it might apply. Number one, we've done work in this parish. And the one I'm specifically familiar with happens to be over the last 10, 12 years since Katrina and even before that, with adding levees, increasing the height of existing levees, raising Highway 11 at those levees to where the difference now, and I'm sure there's been improvements in every district in this parish that might have suffered from Katrina, or other events, whether it be rain, you know, heavy rain events, whatever. There've been improvements made. We don't get credit for those improvements, not one bit. FEMA 2.0 is a broken, 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 devised plan. As I told Congressman Scalise about four years ago, he made, that's when it was heavy security with him, made a stop at that spot. And what I said to him at that point, and I said again to this lady so that she could go to FEMA on our behalf, you know, we're not up there, is if an area does not flood from a 27-inch rain event like occurred in 1995, that's one of three ways that people flood, okay? But we get no credit for that. Those neighborhoods get no credit for that. It's unfortunate for the people who did flood, but I'll tell you this, I know this. For some people that flooded in my parish council district back then, but were in the city, the city added another 60,000-gallon pump station addition to what they had. Now, they wouldn't flood with 27 inches. My home didn't flood with 27 inches because of the Stata Canal. Improvements have been made all through this parish. FEMA does not give us credit for those things. It's not just hurricanes, okay? Hurricanes are a piece of it. But when we, when we have people build higher or people do build higher, when we have levees put in and a Highway 11, and by the way, those levees were put in by a combination of our funds, St. Tammany Parish Government funds, and a portion from the city of Slidell too, when we needed more money. Okay, so that's local spending. Made that point to her. And I'm sorry, I'm losing my, oh. The third one is, if we look at the Midwest and other unfortunate parts of our country, it's everywhere. But other than, I think that Jafunkta, okay, which has not had an overflow, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, I think maybe one time we've had flood, okay, one time. We're not a river-driven community, okay? So, why aren't we getting credit for this other third? Rivers, rain events, and hurricanes? I just told her what I told Congressman Scalise. Just give us two-thirds credit. Right now, I don't know about every one of my colleagues, there are people paying $3,000, $5,000, $8,000 a year for flood insurance. Well, eventually, what's going to happen, and I made this point and I'm going to stop, our money, the money that our citizens earn, they pay their federal, state taxes, whatever. Now, what's left is their spending power, their saving power. We're throwing $3,000 a year, $5,000 a year, $10,000 a year back to the NFIP with the federal government that has the ability to, I mean, believe me, I wish I still had a printing press. I mean, they can print freaking money for everybody. We need some help. And the last thing I said to her was, ma'am, this, I mean this in a very friendly way, it's time for us to start pushing. And so, therefore, getting involved with this litigation, in my opinion, is the right approach. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yes. Yes, I agree 100% with Mr. Bender. I mean, you're looking at it now with the new FEMA 2.0. In my area alone down by Lecombe, which is probably one of the wettest areas, our flood insurance premium is going to be going up 117%. I mean, that's a lot, you know? Now, I understand they're going to be going up 18% per year and trying to get up to that point. I understand all that. But, you know, there are some things that we can avoid and what we can't. And like Mr. Bender was saying, we're trying to do everything with the drainages to get things out, but of course, we can't do nothing with water coming up anyway. That's a fact. We all know that. Now, maybe we could do something about it in the new UDC that's coming up and raise the limit at which the base flood elevation has to be met at a higher rate. That way, you guaranteed to be either raised homes or you have to just, you raise them up or decide not to build out in these wet areas. Thank you. And my constituents are not happy about this.
Seeing no further comment, Mr. Bender, would you like to make the motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Marine, would you want to? All right, Marine will, second. All in favor, please vote, or please vote.
The motion is unanimous with one absent.
All right, say nothing else. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Mr. Law, second by?